Call this meeting of the Mobley City Council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Here.
Kimmons?
Here.
McEwen?
Here.
Graff?
Here.
Scubick?
Here.
Thank you. Everyone should have had a copy of the agenda in front of them for this evening. Is there any corrections or changes to the agenda anyone on council would like to make? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Tonight's agenda has been approved as presented. Also in your packets, you should have received a copy of the minutes from the last council meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to these minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The minutes have been approved. Recognition of visitors. Mr. Bogowski?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tonight we are joined by Mr. Dan Martinez from the Walmart Distribution Center, the general manager out there. So welcome, sir.
Welcome. Also at this time, if there's anybody that does want to address the council, just so you know, come up, fill out a green card with the clerk, put your name and your address. And towards the end of the meeting, when we call you up, you'll have four minutes to address the council. So you'll need to come up and grab a green card from the clerk and have that ready for when the time comes. We don't have any bids to receive this week, so we'll move right into ordinances and resolutions. Number two, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance establishing the tax levy for the city of Mobley, Missouri for the year 2025. Assets be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance establishing the tax levy for the city of Mobley, Missouri for the year 2025.
Any questions or discussion from council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance establishing the tax levy for the city of Mobley, Missouri for the year 2025.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Number three, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance establishing the annual tax for the imposition of a 911 tax for the emergency telephone services heretofore imposed by ordinance number 6948, passed and adopted May 2nd, 1994. And I ask that it be read twice for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance establishing the annual tax for the imposition of a 911 tax for the emergency telephone services heretofore imposed by ordinance number 6948, passed and adopted May 2nd, 1994.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions from council? Just to clarify, this is not an additional tax. This is just a renewal. Second reading, please.
An ordinance establishing the annual tax for the imposition of a 911 tax for the emergency telephone services heretofore imposed by ordinance number 6948, passed and adopted May 2nd, 1994.
Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Okay, number four, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for CCTV inspection with the village of Rynick. I ask that it be read twice for consideration of passage.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for CCTV inspection with the village of Rynick.
Any additional questions from council? Hearing none, second reading.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for CCTV inspection with the village of Rynick.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number five, a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution declaring a proposed name or change of name of East Outer Road to Distribution Drive from Highway 24 North to the Omar N. Bradley Airport and directing publication of such resolution and further authority. Ask that it be read once for passage.
Thank you. Got a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
A resolution declaring a proposed change of name of East Outer Road to Distribution Drive from Highway 24 North to the Omar N. Bradley Airport and directing publication of such resolution and further authority.
Thank you. Obviously, we were all in agreement that something needed to happen with this road last council meeting. Just to change some of the things that have gone on out there in hopes of clearing up some of the accidents. I know there were some disagreements on road name. Is there, is there anybody that disagrees with naming this Distribution Drive? Is there any better idea that you would have better than Distribution Drive? No? Everybody good with Distribution Drive? Okay. Hey, you ever for, hold your peace. That sign's gonna be made. Okay, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Distribution Drive it is. Okay, moving down to number six, I believe, correct? Yeah. Number six, a resolution.
Yes, Mayor. I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement with SiteMed North America LLC for onsite firefighter physicals. Assets be read once for consideration.
Thank you. Have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with SiteMed North America LLC for onsite firefighter physicals.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council regarding firefighter, firefighter physicals? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution has been approved. Number seven, a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a resolution of the city of Mobley, Missouri authorizing an application to the Emergency Management Performance Grant Direct Assistance Program. And I ask that it be read once for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
A resolution of the city of Mobley, Missouri authorizing an application to the Emergency Management Performance Grant Direct Assistance Program.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Everybody good? Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution has been approved. Number eight, a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a resolution of the city of Mobley, Missouri authorizing an application for Missouri Department of Public Safety grant. I ask that it be read once. Consideration of passage.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
A resolution of the city of Mobley, Missouri authorizing an application for a Missouri Department of Public Safety grant.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from anyone on council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution has been approved. And number nine, a resolution.
Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between July 31st, 2025 and August 13th, 2025 in the amount of $879,241.89.
We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between July 31st, 2025 and August 13th, 2025 in the amount of $879,241.89.
Thank you. Everybody certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Mobley, Missouri unappropriated in these funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Allison Boyd. Any further questions or discussion from council? Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution has been approved. That will do it for ordinances and resolutions. Okay, next on the list. Each month, we ask the department heads to submit reports to the council so we have an idea of kind of some of the things that they're working on, some of the things that are happening in their, their core areas. And they spend quite a bit of time on those and we appreciate what they do with that. Is there any questions from anybody on council for any of the department heads?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Tom's not here, so maybe somebody else can pick this up. But it was mentioned under the South Morley Turn Lane that some of the property owners are refusing to give easements. And I was just curious on what some of the opposition to that may be. You know, not mentioned, obviously, mention any names, but you know, what, what might be going on there?
I'll do my best on that one, councilman. So in anything like this, there is generally a contingency of people that don't wish to cooperate for whatever reason. My understanding in talking with Tom on this one is that most of these are just temporary construction easements. And it could just be, it could either be not interested in speaking with us about that or it could just be inability to find these people. Some of these are owned by estates and not necessarily have a responsible party. So sometimes they can be served by publication if there's no person attached to it. So I think it's a multitude of different issues possible. But I believe the engineer was working on that to see if there's ways we can work around some of these properties. I know that's the case for some of them. Whether it's the case for all of them, I really can't say. But I, I think most of it, they thought was manageable. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, but in concert with what you said, I'm finding the monthly reports to be very, very helpful. And well done. You can tell that there's a lot of thought and energy going into them. And just want to say thank you to the department heads.
Very good. Very good. I did have one question, and I think this might go to Steve. But in regards to the project with the water lines out towards the golf course, it's been a while since we've heard anything about that. And I'm afraid the answer might be kind of pretty close to what Mr. Scubick had just asked. Where are we at with that? And what's the progress, if any?
Are you referring to the Route JJ Sewer project?
Correct.
Still in engineers hands. V and R had a handful of questions that they wanted resolved. And I think Sean's working through some, some of the trailer park agreements. I think we're looking at it for it still to go out to construction business.
Good. Okay. It's just been a while since we'd heard anything about it. So I thought I'd bring it back on the radar.
Us too. We just had a discussion about it last week.
Yeah.
With Jacob, so they're moving the ball forward.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All of the easements on that have been acquired, though.
Okay.
So we're not waiting on that at this time.
Gotcha.
On that project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay. That will do it for the monthly reports. Again, thank you, guys, for taking the time to fill those out. Number 11, on anything else to come before the council. Looks like we need to reschedule a few September city council meetings. September 1st, which we would normally have council meeting. City Hall will be closed in observance of Labor Day. And September 15th, the council will actually be at the Missouri Municipal League Conference trying to learn a few things and hopefully we can bring something back to make this place a little bit better. So we're proposing that we move the September 1st meeting to September 8th and we move the September 15th meeting to September 22nd. Does anybody have any objection to that? I would entertain a motion to just move those in one, one swift call.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. We will move those meetings to September 8th and September 22nd. Okay. Number 12, consideration of an appointment to the Mobley, Missouri Public Building Corporation to fill the unexpired term of the late Jerry Jeffrey. Let me get down to that one. Okay, as we discussed at work session, Mr. Brubaker has been submitted an application and we moved him forward to, to this council meeting. So we need to take an official vote for Tim Brubaker to be moved on to the Public Building Corporation. So do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Congratulations to Mr. Brubaker as we welcome him back to the life of public service. As you know, he spent several years on this bench. Okay, that does, oh, we've got public comments. I'm sorry. My favorite part of the meeting. Is there anyone that would like to discuss with the council? You will actually have four minutes to come up, state your name, your address, and what your issue may be. Now would be the time to do that.
Mark Foster.
Hello, sir. State your name and address and I'll kind of let you know when the four minutes gets close, okay?
All right. My name is Mark Foster. I live at 1216 Meyer Street.
Okay, go right ahead.
All right. So I moved here from Columbia back in November and I bought a house on the street. From what I understood, the house next door to me is considered condemned. It's been like that for maybe a year and a half now before I moved there. But since I've moved there, there's standing water about six foot deep in the basement. The whole back end of the house is gone. There's OD freeze. There was a dead cat in there at one point in time. There's frogs living inside of the water. So I've called the city since February about this house repeatedly. I was told about a month ago that it was going to be tore down in three weeks. And then when I spoke to them and the three weeks ended, they told me that it might be a couple more months before they can get to it. But also there is weeds in the back that stands about 12 foot tall in the back of this house. I'm afraid that a kid could fall in that basement at any point in time because there is no safety things around it whatsoever. The front door has no, has like a sunroom. That front door, sunroom does not latch whatsoever, but there is no main door to the house. So anybody or any kid can go inside of that house. But there's also trash about five and a half, six feet tall in the backyard by about 25 feet long inside of the house between the mosquitoes, the birds, the everything that's over there. I don't want to go outside. So I'm just kind of wondering when the city's gonna be able to address that situation.
Sure.
I understand that there's steps. They have to get in touch with the owner and so on. I spoke to the owners. Not a nice man. When I called the city, they also knew ahead of time who I was talking about because the last owner of the house was calling last year about it. But nothing has been done yet.
Okay. So traditionally, you know, what we do is we gather information that you can provide us now and we'll, we'll do some research and forward it on to the appropriate people and then hopefully be able to get you an answer on, on your question. So I'm not prepared to answer it today just because, uh, obviously, we're just hearing about it. But we will do a little homework and a little research and then I will make sure that somebody gets back with you. We've got your contact information as well.
All right.
Is that fair enough?
Yes, and that address is 1214 Meyer.
1214 Meyer, okay. Perfect.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. We appreciate that very much. Yep. Okay, anybody else that would like to come and address the council at this time? Okay. Well, that will do it for our normal council meeting. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn the work session, followed by a closed session to discuss the status of legal and negotiated contract matters.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Okay. We are adjourned from normal council meeting. Thank you all for coming. We'll move right into work session. Okay. Number one, a resolution of official intent of the city of Mobley, Missouri toward the issuance of industrial revenue bonds to finance an industrial development project and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kaylee Paffrath with MAEDC is here to address the council if you have any questions. This is just the initial resolution called the inducement resolution as part of the incentive package with the company. This is not the final deal with them, but it is sort of the, the resolution we have to pass to formally enter negotiations with the company and finalize the incentive package. So that's kind of what this is doing here.
Happy to answer any questions. All right, yeah. Does that work?
There you go.
Okay. I'll talk a little louder and a little bit closer. Yeah, happy to answer any questions since it's just the first phase of several other steps in this process.
Kaylee, one of the things that I thought about as I read through this, you know, it states that, you know, X amount of jobs that they plan to provide. Is there language in this that, you know, further down the road that if they don't provide the amount of jobs that they state that they're going to provide, that there are either repercussions or, or a way to?
Yeah, that's what the pilot payments would be. They're payments in lieu of taxes. So each year, about January 1st, anyone that we have an agreement with, I send out a job verification letter and give them about till the end of March to report their 2024 job counts. And anyone who hasn't met those counts, we keep track of. And then we work with the county assessor and our legal team to address those that might owe pilot payments.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for explaining the process. Anybody else have questions for Kaylee regarding number one? Nope. Kaylee, I think you're gonna get off easy tonight.
Hey, I'll take it. All right.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward. Number two, recommendation to amend city code regarding Sunday liquor sales hours.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is something staff came upon in, in examining our liquor licensing and our liquor ordinances. Our local ordinance actually differs from the state ordinance, state law on liquor sales for Sunday. So Sunday, you see it in there. We say 1:00 PM to midnight, but the state of Missouri says 6:00 AM to 1:30 AM on the following day. So what we think could happen very well with this is there's businesses in town unknowingly violating the city ordinance because it's not universally enforced and it differs from the state law. So I think with no malicious, malicious intent at all from the business, there's some violation of this that's happening. So this is just a question to the council. Would you like to adopt our, alter our local ordinance to match the state statute? Or would you like us to maintain our different local ordinance?
Okay. So it sounds like city managers kind of put it out for discussion. Is there anybody that feels strongly either way? It seems like to me that it would be easier to just follow the state's guidelines and just make everything match. So there's not some, some misunderstanding from some of these folks because I don't know that some of these folks abide by the rule in the first place. So anybody have any thoughts? Good with that. You're good with that?
Would it be expanding the hours of businesses here?
Yeah. Yeah. Ms. Graff?
I'm good.
Good? Okay. Sounds like everybody's kind of on board to moving this to follow the state's guidelines. I think that makes perfect sense. So with no objection, I think we'll move that forward with that idea in mind to the next council meeting. Okay. Okay. Number three, a request to hold the 2025 Mobley Homecoming Parade on September 26th, 2025.
Good evening.
Hi, Chief.
Yes, we had a request to hold the Mobley High School Homecoming Parade for September 26th, 3:00 PM. The standard was started at the post office, Go Get Free Street.
Okay. Any objections to moving this one forward? I think this was pretty self-explanatory. Okay, we'll move that one forward to the next council meeting. Number four, a request to install a 15 mile per hour speed limit sign at the entrance of Lantern Point subdivision on Lantern Point Drive. I know things get pretty wild out there at Lantern Point, so I can, I can see why this would be needed.
So several months ago, Mr. Sanders received written communication from a resident there in reference to safety traffic control. He forwarded to me. I spoke to the resident. She lives down there. They got a petition. Most of the residents assigned. I did go down there and patrol the area. There is no speed limit signs down there. So per city ordinance, the speed limit would be 25 mile an hour, which I personally think is a little fast around there. But, so here we are.
Do you recommend this, this 15 minutes or 15 mile per hour sign? Is that your recommendation?
I do recommend due to the, you know, obviously, there's a concern. They take the time. So as many of these residential neighborhoods are.
Sure.
Do think 25 is too fast.
Very good. Any, any questions for Chief Counsel? Any objections to moving this forward? Okay, we will move this one forward to the next council meeting.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. Number five, receipt of proposal for infill development for 1209 Concanon Street from Pretz Contracting LLC.
Mr. Mayor, we received a request from Pretz Contracting to build an infill house on 1209 Concanon Street. The plan is attached there. It is a two-story home. And he put in here, plan to commence within 30 days. So that is for your consideration tonight.
Okay. Anybody else in contention for this lot that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Anybody on council have any objection to, for this infill project? Okay. Objection to moving this one forward then? Okay. We will move this one forward to the next council meeting. Number six, proposal for landfill sampling and analytical services with Midwest Environmental Consultants.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We've had a relationship with Midwest Environmental Consultants for several decades to do our post-closure monitoring at the old landfill. I've been very happy with that relationship. I've always had a very good relationship there. There, they used a lab and when they bid out the services this year, it was quite a bit higher. So that company bid out for other lab services and was able to find something that was comparable to the price last year by moving to a different lab. the price last year by moving to a different lab. So this is a budgeted item. This is something we expend money on every year. The only real change for us is the lab that Midwest Environmental Consultants has changed to bring it in line with pricing in the past.
Okay. And this is something that we're required to do yearly?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any questions from council? Any objection to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward to the next council meeting. Number seven, receipt of bids, receipt of bid for crack seal machine.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we regularly turn over the crack seal machine every ten years. That just seems to be the sweet spot that Tom has felt with these. It is budgeted in our street improvement fund for a three-year lease purchase. This is a source well cooperative purchase in single bid for eighty-five thousand, one eighty-seven. Was in the budget for thirty-one thousand on three-year payment, so it comes in within that budget. Tom believes our current crack sealer carries still a pretty good residual value to be sold on Purple Wave for around thirty thousand. So this is, this is an item that is used daily by our staff, so basically if it's not raining, one of our staff members is out there running this in the community. So let me know if you have any questions on that.
The, I know we originally thought this wasn't included in the budget, but we've now learned that it is, so I'm okay with it. Or is it set in stone that we sell the old one and recoup that money, or are we going to try to keep the old one and have two of them?
No, Tom said.
He would sell it. Okay, gotcha. Any objections or questions, actually, any questions? Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward to the next council meeting. Number eight, change order for Five Oaks associate, Five Oaks Associates on the sprinkler system for the fennel building.
Really missing Tom today.
I think he does this on purpose.
So there was a design choice, I guess I would say, by the engineer for the fennel building that we did not agree with as staff. On one side of the building, the sprinkler suppression, they put tight up to the ceiling, kind of had a nice aesthetic, didn't interfere with your view lines. On one side of the building, they had it hanging down a foot and a half that we didn't think would look right in that space. It's kind of the main open space on the west side, so we just didn't agree that that would be a good look there. We did catch it before that they put it in very far. They'd only made it a little ways, but that's what this is, and it's staff's agreement that this is. For a fairly modest change of thirty-three hundred dollars, this drastically improves the aesthetics of that versus having a pipe hanging down a foot and a half below the ceiling.
You know, tall people like me might hit their head on something like that.
We hadn't considered that angle, but, you know.
Makes perfect sense. Any questions from anyone on council? Nope. Any objection to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward to the next council meeting. Number ten, consideration of, let's see, I'm sorry, number nine, change order for Five Oaks Associates on the fennel building itself.
So I gave Tom a call about this one because I hadn't been involved necessarily in the conversation, and this has been talked about before with the council. That's why it's familiar to you guys. This is changing the entryway of the middle area to the south storefront. We just hadn't had a price back from Five Oaks on this, so this is the change order. It's been talked about before, but this hasn't been approved before by the council. But this is something we talked about several months ago. It's part of the ADA accessibility of the building. In addition to that, they're also raising some of the brickwork up on the glass windows, as they're quite low. So there is a small deduct for less window glazing, and then in addition to added masonry. That's what this does.
And this is on the south entrance, which would be called the main entrance, I guess, correct?
I would say so, yes. It's kind of that middle door on the south side facing.
And we didn't, did we not do any work on the entrance, on the east entrance towards the police station? Was there no work done there at all? Seems like I remember something.
I don't remember that, but I can't say for sure one way or another on that. Sorry.
Okay. Well, if it's ADA, makes us ADA compliant, I guess we've got to do what we've got to do. So any questions for Mr. Bogowski, or anything to forward on to Mr. Sanders when he returns? Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this on to the next council meeting. Number ten, consideration of two reappointments to the airport advisory board.
We had two members of the airport advisory board who are incumbents, who sought to be reappointed, John Brillhart and Robert Creed, and staff would recommend moving those forward for your consideration at this meeting.
How, you may not know the answer to this question. I can ask it next council meeting if you don't, but how often does the airport advisory board meet? Are they a regularly scheduled program, or?
Just on an as-needed basis?
Just as-needed, okay. Any objections for moving these two forward to be reappointed to the airport board? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move them forward. Number eleven, consideration of an appointment to the electrical board.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the electrical board has had a vacancy since April of 2024. Excuse me. The advertised and received an application from Mr. Chris Long, who's been an electrician for forty years and has owned a business in town for many years. So his application for that board is for your consideration tonight.
Any objections to moving Mr. Long forward? Okay, we will move that one forward to the next council meeting. Number twelve, consideration of bobcat replacement for the Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Bach?
So this is a budgeted item. We've been kicking this piece of equipment in terms of the replacement back for several budget years. As you see in the summary, we budgeted ninety thousand. The piece of equipment with an attachment that we need badly is just over the ninety thousand, so about three thousand over budget. That being said, it'll allow us to replace the brush cutter that we've, attachment that we have that's been, it's had a lot of maintenance over the years. It was old when I got here, and so that'll put us in a much better position going forward. And again, we'll be able to more than offset it with unbudgeted revenue by selling that older piece of equipment. So this is a source well contract. You'll see the attached documents, the regular price is about a hundred thirty thousand with source wells, ninety-two thousand. This will change almost ninety-three, so that's the value of the source well, you know, pre-bid, pre-negotiated contracts. But I just wanted you to see that we don't always get the regular price in writing, but we had the opportunity.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Bach? And I do appreciate your thorough explanation in the document. That was very easy to read and understood it a hundred percent, so thank you for doing that. Any objection to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay. Okay, last one on the list, number thirteen, a contract approving a medical director for nine-one-one communications, police department, and fire department.
So this is a contract with Dr. Stilly out of MU for medical direction for nine-one-one police and fire. Fire started to pursue it. I don't believe a contract was ever signed. This is also going to include the police and nine-one-one communications. It will cover some training. It will cover looking over, you know, doing QA QI, which is quality assurance, quality improvement, and making sure that we are following everything that we need to be following from the medical director's standpoint.
So where it says two hundred and twenty-eight dollars an hour, do we have any estimate on where we're at at the end of the year?
I think they were figuring probably about ten hours per department, and it may not be that much. If it's more than that, he'll bill us. If it's less than that, he's going to bill us for whatever it is. But they were estimating approximately ten hours per department.
Okay.
I don't know that the training will be that much for, you know, the police department. It depends on how many trainings they set up. Fire, they're going to have a little bit more with the medical calls, looking over reports, and then obviously nine-one-one as well, but.
When you get your software that helps train your medical dispatchers, do you still feel like you need this piece of it, this human element of it, or can this go away when you have all of that?
I think we will still need it just to look over, you know, certain those high-frequency calls that, you know, the CPR is in progress to make sure we're following everything we need to, as well as if there's improvements that we can do, different procedures we can put in place, just making sure that we're following those guidelines. So he'll just look over a certain amount each month and just bill directly.
I think that sounds good. Anybody else have any questions for Ms. Shelby? Nope. Thank you. Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Nope. Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn from work session.
So moved.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Hope everyone has a great...